Amendment of a member.
Don, I just want to point out to continue that as far as the public meeting goes, that attendees who wish to be heard will raise their hand to be recognized as opposed to using the chatroom or the Q and A options of the Zoom commands, so that those chats and Q and A at this point are not considered, they're like as if you're speaking in the back of the McCallum Townhouse Hearing Room between yourselves and not with the planning board. So I just wanted to make that clear that if an attendee wants to be heard at the appropriate time, they should raise their hand. We won't be relying on the Q and A or the chat for that kind of communication with the planning board and the rest of the public.
And that's as a result of our last meeting where that was going on and we weren't sure if that was proper. So thank you. Thank you for adding that so that the people can understand how to participate. So now we can go to the master plan committee update and appointment of a member.
I think we're going to hold off on appointment of a member because it was appointing someone from the ZBA in, I don't think that they've discussed it in an open meeting yet because it's on their agenda for Wednesday. So I just want to make sure everything's in accordance with open meeting law. So I'd prefer to wait on that until they have taken an actual vote in open meeting. And we are meeting on Wednesday and to start going over the edited chapters. Sarah, Julie, and Judith are going to be having a discussion this week?
Yep, tomorrow.
Very good. So hopefully, I know Judith has been working very hard. I saw edited chapter from Julie, so expecting great things on Wednesday. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments? No questions, comments, Sarah?
Nope. I mean, the ZBA does have someone identified to join the mass plan committee, but I echo what Mimi said, they haven't voted on it formally yet. So glad we're holding off, but also glad that we have somebody who's ready to come on board. And also there's no questions from, there are no hands raised. And I think there's 21 attendees currently. Currently, yeah.
So move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. Six dash eight Turnpike Road modification to major site plan. Karina, were you going to read the public hearing notice?
We read that at the at the July 19th meeting, we actually opened the public hearing, I believe, and continued the public hearing to this evening's planning board meeting due to the certified return receipt green cards having come in late.
That's right, yep. So having read the public hearing notice, can you give us an update before we turn it over to, would it be Peter?
Yes, he's with Engineering Design Consultants representing the property owner. Okay, so Planning Board's public hearing number one for six to eight Turnpike Road modification for a major site plan approval was held on July 19th, continued to this evening. In the interim, we reviewed the green cards received and the majority have been received and returned. Let's see, we have also received a review from Fussin O'Neil of the original submittal on July 21st, to which Peter Bemis of Engineering Design Consultants provided a revised submission and a response letter to Fussin O'Neil's comments. I believe that the project is currently in front of the Conservation Commission for an amendment to a stormwater management permit, which is continued to next week, I believe. We have not received any further town department comments other than the initial comments from the ADA Committee regarding just general planning board attention to ADA compliance for any parking changes, et cetera. On August 12th, we received a follow-up review letter from Fussin O'Neil on the submission number two from Peter Bemis. These were forwarded to the planning board for review as well as back to the applicant. And the 12th was on Thursday, last Thursday, which brings us to this evening, the public hearing that we were continuing to for this project. That's all I have done. Oh, just make sure that's everything. Nope, that's it. Sorry about that.
Okay, Mr. Bemis, you're on.
Good evening, Peter Bemis, Engineering Design Consultants. So I do want to clarify one point is that everyone was properly noticed and return receipts were obtained from most of the people we sent to. Some people just don't get their certified mail and sometimes the post office doesn't return. But every white slip was provided for every letter that was properly notified. The proposal is for putting a parking lot on the east side of the existing facility at six Turnpike. The site plan, I'm not sure if I share my screen or if you use yours, so is it?
You can share your screen.
Excuse me?
You can share your screen.
Yep, just give me one second. I do have the site plan there, it would be easier if I was to be able to illustrate that, so thank you.
Yep, you're all set.
Does that come through in the center of the screen? Okay?
Um, yep, it's all set now. Everybody else can see.
I can zoom in closer. So again, this is the full facility, so west, north at the top, south, east, and this is the east side of the building, so I will bring the image in closer to that so you can see better. And then in this area, currently, there is a detention basin. There is a connection here with the drains from the front portion of the site coming into this position. And then there's another one here where they come in to the rear. The discharge is located here with an outlet control structure that then ties in, ultimately going into Route 9 with our stormwater system. We have provided our information to Chris Chambers. Chris is the permits engineer for District 3. I'm waiting commentary back from them to confirm that there'll be no further action needed by the department. Reason being is that we're actually reducing the rate of flow into the municipal or the state system. And we are pre-treating it with proprietary CDS units on site. The existing catch basins within this area, next to the construction window, will have silt sacks installed in them. And then we're proposing to put in a new drain manhole and a new treatment unit, a set of CDS units here, and then another one at the rear portion of the site. Underground, there would be galley chambers. It should be a series of these galleys that would have a storage volume associated with them and then a stone apron under and around them so that the stormwater can then be detained in a similar manner as being done in an open basin, requiring less footprint and actually having a better efficiency because we can capture more stormwater and hold it back and release it at a slower rate. There are 16 parking spaces proposed within this area and we have provided trees. There will be two, two and a half inch red maples planted around the perimeter of the site in this area. I'll advance to the next sheet to show you the details. So again, the CDS unit is here, the silt sacks, our erosion control barrier, sedimentation erosion control notes. This is the outlet control structure, deep sump catch basin for the new one that we're proposing. And these are the galley chambers. I'm sorry, it's not panning over further, but if I need to come back to that, I'll figure out how to get there. This is a sweat plan, so it's a standalone stormwater management plan for the site since we are changing the methodology for how the project would be managed in its stormwater system. So this adds the new notes that are required for maintenance of the CDS units and the galley system. We have already done a annual report and submitted that to Conservation for the current system because they had not received one from the owner of the facility. So we have done that based upon the existing system and we will supplement with a new one when we get approvals. And then the final plan is a plan done by Cornerstone. And I know the version that you had initially, we've retracted and we provided a new version. I will say to you that that version still says it's located in Framingham. Cornerstone did finally reissue the drawing and it does say South Borough and that has been distributed. When we do the next update to the plans, we will put that one that we just received into the database. There is a stormwater report that does respond to the site conditions that was reviewed by Fuss and O'Neil. I did get their comments back. Rather than try to go through them all now from the ones we got on Thursday, I don't believe there's anything in the list that we can't address. So if you wanted to hone in on any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Generally speaking, with the comments that they provided, I didn't see anything being a problem. The one thing I did note was that because we added 16 parking spaces, that put us into a new threshold for handicap parking. And we can realign the parking spaces across the north parking space here and maintain the same number of parking spaces, but provide the requisite number of handicap parking spaces. So we will be able to address that. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up to the board, Mr. Mills.
Yeah, thanks, Don. Peter, thanks for the review. Can you highlight where?
Do you want to go back to, I'm sorry, I'll share again. I just thought everyone would want to see each other. Okay, just a moment, I'll put it back. Go right ahead.
Is there any change to the lighting?
Oh, yes. Okay, yep, there is one light fixture. Let me zoom in on that and I'll show you where that is. So the existing fixture is located in this position right here. We're moving it straight back. It's a cutoff shield, so if you went back to the original photometrics for that and the way it was casting its light, it was casting its light in this direction. We're just moving it straight back, so it's going to continue to cast light in the same direction. So to be honest with you, you're actually going to get less foot candles at this position here and the foot candles aren't going to change over here at all because it's going straight back. So if anything, there's going to be less light coming in the southerly direction. And because it's a cutoff shield, it does not extend light. In this direction is actually a light fixture right here that would be putting more light in this zone of the site versus the one here. So we did ask that, we were asking to relocate it, but not run a new photometric for that light. It's no different than currently what you'd have. If anything, it's like I said, less light will be cast. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then so in the trees, it looks like you're removing three but adding eight. Is that correct?
Yes, but so the three that are there, they're kind of in the detention basin and I did suggest that we could possibly relocate those because I thought if they were going to be removed, we could certainly get them back in the ground again. And I had suggested that we could plant them here on the southern side of the site. And I'm still open to that. I think the fuss have come back and said, well, if they die, we would be responsible for them. And I think I'm already putting in enough trees to meet your requirements. I just didn't want to necessarily commit a tree to its demise with this project. So if it's still thriving and we can replant it, we will.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Andrew?
Yep, all set down. Thank you.
Is Jesse, Jesse on board?
Oh, I'm sorry. I failed to, yeah, I failed to also point out, I thought you were aware of that. Jesse is not available to this evening's meeting. He emailed us last week.
Okay, sorry about that. Go on to Mrs. Luttrell.
Thank you. Um, Peter, by two to two and a half inch red maple, you mean caliper and not two and a half inch seedlings?
Yeah, caliper. I'm sorry that Walter didn't add that, but when we do the revised plan, I'll make sure it says cal.
Okay, and our bylaw requires three inch minimum?
Okay, we could do that. I'll just do three, three and a half. That's how we would purchase them.
Okay. Um, and why red maple?
I know it's on your list. It's very hardy. I think the site could use some color, so that's where I went with it. Be happy to substitute a different tree if someone wants something different.
Just, I like maple. The only concern is they're salt intolerant if there's going to be snow plowed on them. Like maybe someone, the front ones probably won't survive.
Well, I wouldn't want them to be plowing snow on them as part of the management of the site, but or using a lot of salt, but at the same time, I'll look at a substitute species that has better salt tolerance too.
And the plan says there's storage spaces? What does that mean?
These are just more parking spaces for vehicles. The TNL has a very successful business there with repairs. And with automobile repair, it tends to be that someone drops their car off at the beginning of their workday and they'll sometimes not pick it up again until the end of their workday. So that transient nature of having a vehicle on your hands all day long can be difficult to respond to. And as you've seen out there, they do park off the pavement limits at times. And what we're trying to do is have some semblance of order here. So I think by doing this, it will improve the site conditions greatly and it will and it will allow them to better manage how they address client needs as well.
I'd also like to just interject, Peter. I believe also that the property owner within the past year asked for a license to have spaces for selling cars, of which of the five he requested, he was granted two spaces for car sales. And that I believe there was a condition or something said that if he provided more parking beyond what was approved in the original site plan for the uses that exist there, that they would, they would allow him to go to five spaces for car sales.
I'm not familiar with that, but I'll take that as on the record. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And my other concern, the street tree guidelines on the DPW's website recommends that trees and parking lots get planted four feet from edge of pavement to allow for clearance for the bumper overhang?
Yeah, we're well in excess of that. I'd say these are more on the order of 10 to 12. Probably the closest one would be the one on the east corner there and I can certainly make sure that it's at least six feet back. I wouldn't even go close to four feet because then your snow will be on it.
Right.
So yeah, I'll look into that. And we'll just make sure there's a statement on there to ensure that they're back fine.
Okay, and the last thing is one thing that Fussin O'Neil mentioned was the absence of lid techniques utilized on the site.
Yeah. Because of how we're managing stormwater under the parking lot, we do need to afford pretreatment, which is with the CDS unit. So we're eliminating the passive forbays that are there and forbays are only as good as the maintenance that's performed on them. I saw what Fuss was putting in there, most current comments, and I tend to doubt that the percentage should be that high because typically when we even do a forbay, we'll still use the CDS unit because we're trying to mechanically trap the sediment and not have to have an open deposition area to trap the sediment because it tends not to get maintained enough. So I can't do both, so we would have to forego some lid principles with this proposal. The site is only so large and there's only so many things that we can and can't do. That would be one of them, is that we would have to rely on a mechanical system, which is proven technology. It does receive a high credit for its treatment value. And that's what I'm substituting for the open forbay. Other than that, you're getting equal treatment with what's here and being proposed. And if anything, we're reducing the rate of discharge into the Route 9 system when we're done.
All set, Mimi? Mrs. Houlihan?
Yeah, my whole comment was around the lid, the comment that per section 3.15 of the lid, at the multiple comments that Fussin O'Neil just mentioned, Peter, I know you just reviewed that. I guess it's the challenge for us is if that is the requirement in our bylaw. How do you, how do you propose the ability for us to translate what you can provide into what is required? Is there like a crossover, some sort of content and is that the role of Fussin O'Neil, Don, to help us do that crosswalk from what he's proposing with the CDS units to the lid requirements? Is my question clear?
Yeah, no, I understand your question and I'm not trying to minimize what you're asking in any way. What I'm just recognizing is that the CDS unit does attain the principles. Folks just don't look at it as something that's in the lid vein. And I took Mimi's comments and I don't really have a way of addressing them. I know what I'm going to try to this evening. We just got them on Thursday. What I think has to happen sometimes is you recognize the site, you recognize the limitations, you provide as high a quality treatment as you can. We did not take advantage of infiltration when we analyzed this site. The original proposal did not either, so we just figured let's keep it equal. The ground here is fairly permeable and it does infiltrate. I did go out and do a test pit to provide Fussin O'Neil with that data. And I would expect that and that probably would be another way to address the lid comment. I just wasn't prepared to try to do that tonight. We'll, I'd like the opportunity to respond to Fuss and O'Neil's comments and maybe something else could be added. We could probably enhance the landscaping maybe a little bit more, which is another lid principle that could go a long way to improving the situation. But in this instance, somewhat hamstrung to do things. The site's already built, so I don't have the ability to change where the outlet goes to Route 9. I don't have the ability to do some other things that would possibly give you back some lid principles. We didn't design it the first time. I know what I would have done if I did. We would have infiltrated all of the roof water right out of the gate and they didn't do that. I don't know why they didn't do that, but they didn't. And unfortunately, that's an opportunity that's missed because the roof drains are all in place as a function of how they came off the building and I can't get to them efficiently. The only other thing I'd add is that this project has a limited budget and we're spending a great deal of money to get the 16 parking spaces back. And again, had they thought about this, have been told of this opportunity when they first designed it, I don't think it would have cost them anywhere near what it's going to cost them today to do it. Unfortunately, they just, the conversation was never had. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, I think it's just the challenge, my own perspective is just the, I understand budget implications, but there's also implications beyond just the property owners and you know what that implication is to our surrounding environment. So that's the role I need to play as well. So I appreciate that you're going to look into it and that was really my only comment. Chairman Morse?
Thank you. Um, I was going to get into the Fussin O'Neil comments, but since you need time to look at them, Peter, we won't. And I'm glad Mrs. Luttrell brought up the term storage spaces. I think it's storage, storage spaces or storage? I don't think that term is defined in our site plan or anywhere else. So that is a pretty wide open term where virtually anything can be stored there. So I would suggest that if you want to call them storage spaces, that okay, yes, thank you. Sorry about that. We either have to get rid of the term and clarify what exactly is going to be put in all of these spaces. It's assumed that these are parking spaces and they would be for motor vehicles. But the term storage space could mean virtually anything, connects.
We weren't trying that. Okay, so I'll make that very clear. Right now I can make it clear and then I'll make sure it's added to the plan. These were for vehicles. This was not intended to be outdoor storage, if that's what you're implying, so.
Well, it could be automobile parts, containers, that type of thing. And if that's what they want, then that's what they should identify it as. Otherwise, it's going to be approved for motor vehicles and only motor vehicles.
That's right. We're just trying to distinguish it from being like, it's a vehicle that's gone into storage from the client. In other words, they've dropped the car off, it needs to be stored there, but it's not going to stay there. So they're at their rollover parking spaces, but I will clarify that. Thank you.
And I might have missed this, but I know you talked about contacting Mass DOT in Route 9 and I know that one of the Fussin O'Neil comments had to do with, I think it was two one hundredths of an acre foot exceeding the pre-condition, the peak flow condition. And I think Fussin O'Neil's comment was that it's up to the planning board to accept that as minimal or not. Is that, Karina, is that still an item that the board has to look at? You know the one I'm talking about?
I do. I will have to check on that as far as it being a de minimis, which means negligible increase. I haven't had a chance to fully read through all the comments, you know, word by word. Are you asking me if that's an acceptable minimal increase?
No, I think we got, no, we got the opinion from Fussin O'Neil that it's minimal. And if the board goes along with that, then we'll just have to say that, yes, your post-construction flow rate or volume, I think it's volume, is higher than the pre-construction and that's not allowed. But if the number is so But if the number is so small and our engineering consultant feels that it's rather an insignificant increase, then, then the board should formally agree, agree to that so that the you know, the the non-compliance is okayed by the, by the planning board.
Correct. In the, in the opinion of Fussin O'Neil, the increase in volume is minimum when compared to the approved calculations. The change should not have an adverse impact on the site as previously approved. And which was in response to Peter Bemis's response to the original question. There's a small increase in volume over the previous report of, as you said, point zero two, that's two one hundredth acre feet. However, the peak discharge rates are significantly reduced over the previously approved stormwater management. And you're right, that's exactly Fussin O'Neil felt that was back here.
So at, at the point of I, I hope getting conditions or addressing these comments that the board would address that and either say, no, you have to get it down to zero. Or we agree with Fussin O'Neil that point zero two is okay. You've agreed to clarify the storage term. And I may have missed this also. Karina, you and I were talking about getting something in writing from Mass
DOT.
DOT relative to the new design. Do we have that?
I think Peter said early on when we were getting organized here that it's in review with Chris Chambers at Mass DOT District Three, right, Peter? It's currently being reviewed and once you have documentation back that Mass DOT finds that acceptable, you'll provide us with that document.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, as far as the the lid, I could be wrong, but it seems like every single proponent for every single project says the same thing, which is this site isn't conducive to lid. There's not enough room. It's this or it's that. And when the reality is that the proponent is usually coming in with a design that maximizes what they want to do. And then they declare that there's no room for lid. That's what's happened here. So and once again, we're, we're hearing that there's no room for, for lid. However, we have in the past taken a more of a global view. So perhaps, and I think this would have to be coordinated with DPW. There may be somewhere else in town where a lid technique, a lid item could be installed that would improve a situation elsewhere in town. So that the net effect across the town would be improved. And the proponent here would perform or arrange to have a lid technique installed off, off of this property, but with coordination with the DPW. Or some, some other entity. So that, as far as I'm concerned, is something that if you can't do it at this site, we should look into doing it somewhere else in the town of Southborough. And like you to come back on that too, because if we start saying, yeah, you're right, there's no room for lid. Then the next, the next proponent's going to come in and say the same thing and over and then next thing you know, the, the lid is, is totally useless. It's ignored. And that's not, that's not the way it should be. Open it up to the public. Anybody questions, comments?
As, as, as Sarah is checking for questions. Question, Peter, was there an asphalt burn detail in the construction?
I thought there was, but I can certainly add one if there's not one there. That's the other, that, that would be one lid principle that we could do is instead of curbing this hole, the area of new pavement, we could, we could look into that. I, I would like the opportunity to try to address the shortcomings and find out why the CDS unit has such a high value for treatment as a pre-treatment item, but that doesn't receive value under lid principles. So I'll have to, I'll have to see why and have a better explanation next time.
Anyone from the public? To my understanding. There's been a request for an extension submitted and signed by Mr. Bemis, is that correct?
That's correct.
And can you put that on the screen?
I'll, I'll stop sharing.
Because if that's the case, we need to entertain a motion to grant an extension of the approval period.
Which currently is August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one, sixty days from the filing date of the modification application. See where it is, Sarah, in the Dropbox? Okay.
I do see where it is and I'm in the Dropbox. It's just give me some trouble loading.
It's backwards though. Sorry, in case you can't find it.
Well, it's standard form. Why don't you read the, what is it, the bottom paragraph?
Sure. So this is a request for continuation, extension of a public hearing for the modification to major site plan approval. I, the above applicant, or duly authorized representative of such applicant hereby request and agree to the continuation of the above referenced hearing related to the above referenced matters and an extension of the planning board's time to reach a decision on matters. The hearing shall be continued to September thirteenth, two thousand twenty one at seven oh five PM. The time that the board still, the time that the board shall have to reach a decision on the matter shall be extended to September seventeenth, two thousand twenty one. And it's signed by Peter Bemis dated August third.
So the, the hearing would be continued to the thirteenth on Monday. But the approval period would be extended to the seventeenth, which is the Friday after that Monday.
Right, in case there's something happens in between and you need a couple of days.
Right. Mr. Mills?
Chair, I make a motion to accept or approve the request for continuation for the approval period for six and eight Turnpike Road modification to major site plan as requested by the applicant.
There we go. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Want a minute to look at this? Basically extending the approval period and then if this motion passes, we'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we've extended the approval period. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We continue the public hearing for six and eight Turnpike Road modification to major site plan for September thirteen, twenty twenty one at seven
four five.
Seven oh five PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we'll see you then, Peter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a proposed, proposed, it's a continued public hearing. Proposed downtown district bylaw zoning map and design guidelines. That's the town planner to give us an update.
Give me, I'm working out of my crate. Okay. So at the last planning board meeting on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty one, it was the initial public hearing number one for zoning amendment to create a downtown district in the Business Village district of the downtown area. We were tasked with a couple of things. One was to follow up with Julie Connolly, if she had, there were additional updates. The outcome of that was that Julie had some concerns based on, from a resident, a citizen's basis, not from the EDC. And that she would mention those at, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or the planning board meeting at these public hearing forum. If there were additional concerns to the current draft of the bylaw language. The other thing is we posted that sample Northborough and Hopkington design guidelines. We have not yet received updated design guidelines. I believe they're being worked on still with Judy Barrett and the working group with Mimi and Sarah. And I'm not sure if Marnie was included in some of those meetings or the meeting they had. But we haven't received new design guidelines yet updated. The originals and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, they were based on Hopkington, the ones that were submitted last year. It's so you can see those on the town website with the hearing documents. Then we did forward the ADA committee comments that we received from Chairman Bill Signs to the Board of Selectmen and the EDC for their review. In the interim, we planning and Sarah created some inter composite images that she provided regarding different scenarios based on the last meeting, one of the butters had mentioned different zoning scenarios like a part A, part B, as opposed to one district. And also want to point out we received an email from Ray Hokinson on Thursday, August twelfth at two thirty one PM with attachments. This was a, a letter that was attached, addressed to the planning board. CC to the selectman, the historical commission and the EDC. And the letter addresses the topic of unsubstantiated and unnecessary requests by some individuals to switch from residential to business zones. This topic will confuse and derail the real topic at hand, which is evaluating in pub, in public hearing, the proposed EDC downtown town center zoning war warrant article. I provide my letter discussing the subject in word and PDF format. So we received that from Ray Hokinson, ten Main Street. I saw that this afternoon, having been out last week. So if maybe we can post that somewhere or I'm just letting the planning board know that that came in and it was forwarded to you. This morning also, I received an envelope on the counter from an anonymous person. I think it was mailed to me with the downtown, with a myself dot com article dated July twenty third, two thousand twenty one. The article was titled Downtown Zoning Suggestions, Maps Issues, Economic Questions, Transparency and Status. And it said, see comments, which I believe they were referring to see the blog comments that usually appear at the end of these articles. So that was in the mail this morning. I don't know who it's from.
This is it here. Karina, I got one also.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's it.
I don't know who sent it, but it was in my mail, mailbox. Whoever sent it, I thought was it was helpful to read those. Did the rest of the board members get them?
Yeah, I got it, but I just got it today and I just got off a plane two hours ago, so I haven't read it.
Yeah, we got it this morning in the middle of the other million tasks we were working on. We had it, we put it on the Dropbox if necessary. Desire anyone who would like to see it can contact us at the planning department too. We can provide that.
Okay.
And that brings us up to this meeting. This is the second public hearing for the downtown district zoning amendment that's proposed. We currently have twenty four attendees in the attendee room.
Actually, Karina, we also got that wastewater.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Correct. You are right. We also provided a copy of Weston and Sampson Engineering's wastewater facility study. I think that was about two weeks ago. Yeah, we did, we did get that. Thanks, Marnie. That's it done.
Okay. Does anybody on the board want to speak to the wastewater report?
Do not see any hands raised.
Go ahead, Marnie. Were you, did you want to?
Yeah, I didn't spend a lot of time with it. I read it and I, I think there's the, the, the component that we've heard multiple times is the wastewater issue is there's also a drainage issue. So I don't think the drainage issue is necessarily being tackled on this. It's simply wastewater. It looked like a, you know, a feasibility planning type of estimate for quite a large sum of money, which I think would have to be, you know, taken into serious consideration in order to kind of assess this property to really be the right property for a true, you know, if we were really going to bring in businesses and have this by right type of zoning. So I do think it's something that would need to be part of the, the consideration as the selectmen bring this forward. It was a lot to read. I, I didn't have a lot of time to digest it, but I think it was, you know, somewhere in the order of two million dollars to be able to kind of start a feasibility planning assessment. And then I just don't know where the drainage situation would reside as well, because I think for current property owners, I know we've heard several times from the owners of Morrow on other issues that the drainage is just seriously a problem. So I, I think it is a comprehensive situation that we have here and I appreciated the ability to have this wastewater proposal in front of us because it really helps to assess all the situation that is before us in considering significantly changing the zoning.
I'd just like to point out as well that it is a draft form at this point and that Weston and Sampson has yet to provide the final report and they're working on making some changes and incorporating some of Paul Pazinski, who was former border health agents, feedback and comments. Just want to make that clear, that it's still draft form.
Okay, so if, unless the board has a different idea, why don't we just open it up to the public?
And, and one last thing, just to not leave this out, we did receive an email from Claire Reynolds, who is a resident in town, but also acting, was acting as the grant manager. I'm not sure if that continued past June thirtieth. But we did receive an email post with a link to a blog that she had responded to. So I just didn't want to leave that out. That was on July 29. After the last meeting. Okay. Thanks.
So Sarah, why don't we open it up to public? Raised hands?
We do have one raised hands. Looks like Kevin O'Connell. Kevin Connell, excuse me, not O'Connell. You also?
That's you. Hello, this is Kristen Cornell. I'm here with my sister Karen Cornell. I just want to restate that we own 15 Main Street and we continue to be interested in having 15 Main Street included in a business overlay district. 15 Main Street is unique in that it is in between two business use properties currently. St. Mark's has a multifamily on one side and we have the office building on the other side. And 15 Main is unique because it's already, I would argue, operating in a business use. It's a multifamily house. It has a easement for a daycare playground on it. And it has a sewer system for the office building in a residential lot. And that includes a leaching field in a residential lot. So I just want to reiterate when and if we do have a business overlay, we would like 15 Main to be included in it. I think because of the location of the property, it's in a great position to do something really nice for the town. And we're interested in the future of Southborough and being involved in it. And I think 15 Main Street could play a nice role in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
We still have 24 attendees. We do. There we go. Ray Hokinson, this request is as it's hand raised.
Yep.
Did that one work?
Also?
Okay, it's kind of like a double click or something. I'll let my letter be a response to the 15 main request. And I would just disagree that the St. Mark's property is not a business, period. It is a residence. Clarification, I made that clear. The question I had is the, the two design guides, the question about design guides, everybody says, you know, the design guides will be a key factor in the appearance of any buildings that go up. And I read both the Hopkington Design Guide and the Northborough Design Guide. Hopkington, I guess, well, it's going to be, I'm going to say something and then I'm going to ask a question for clarification. The Hopkington one is really sort of very sparse, very brief. And it seems to give a lot of power to some design review committee that would then assess, you know, were, was the new proposal consistent with surrounding buildings or existing buildings in their village center? So they seem to give a lot of power to some committee in that one. Likewise, the Northborough one, oh, oh, by the way, the nice thing about it is, is it really says that new construction or modification really has to fit in and be compatible with the existing structure. So they're really talking about, you know, being very careful not to alter the feel of the, of the, their town center. Northborough kind of has something similar and it seems, well, it's much bigger and much more elaborate and longer with a whole bunch of pictures of good and bad examples. But also they then alluded to, this was a baseline for somebody to review the design, that it was a process. Although it's by right design or by right zoning, there still seemed to be, in the Northborough case, a review committee that would then look at, you know, what are you doing? What's your design? Well, how are you going to do it? And there did still seem to be some sort of assessment on the style of whatever was going to be built. One other comment is that the Northborough one seems to be a huge guide at all of Route 20. And it seems to be just this big plan. And most of their good example pictures wouldn't even fit into downtown South. It was, you know, there were big things in, in their good picture examples were sort of out almost in sort of country area or in a big plaza area with a big parking lot. And it just seems like, okay, that's nice. That's Route 20. But it's not downtown Southborough, which is very small and compact. I guess my question here is, even if we have the zoning approach where it's, you know, by right building, is there still a review process to the style of the building that would happen as these two other design guides imply? Or if somebody just say, oh, well, we're following the rules, therefore we don't have to get any review. So that's my question to the Planning Board on how things like that would or might happen for downtown. That's it, I'm done. Do I have to turn myself off? Or you can turn me off.
I can.
I, I don't have the proposed code with me tonight. Does somebody want to answer that question? I believe the answer is yes. Go ahead, Mimi.
So the answer is yes, the site plan, depending on square footage, either a minor or major, but still come before the Planning Board. Other towns did or do have design review committees. Judy Barrett, our consultant, said that those didn't really work out very well and that a lot of those towns are getting rid of them. So I think the initial thought was that the Planning Board would review this design in conjunction with the site plan review. And in regards to the Northborough and it being completely different than Southborough, I agree that the nice thing I liked about the Northborough was that it had pictures that made it easier to figure out what was being sought and what was preferable. That's it.
So Ray, did did that answer your question?
I don't think it's promoted anymore, Dawn, so he can't really.
No, but I can. He's all set now.
Okay, am I okay now?
Yeah, Ray.
Yeah, for the most part, that did answer that there is a review process. But it's more stylistically, like somebody has satisfied the zoning constraints and by right, I'm going to build this, but somebody still has the right to comment about, you know, the, the, the style of the building and the surrounding areas and landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct? That's, I'm getting a nod here, so I expect that to still be the case. Okay, that helps understand the process a bit. And at the moment, that it was my question after reading both of them. They're very, very different by, you know. The interesting thing for the Northborough Design Guide, there is at least one Southborough building there, the one by the train station. And they kind of use it as a good example, the big yellow building there by, on Southfield Road there by 80 and 85. And they seem to slag Marlboro off a lot because all their bad examples seem to be someplace on Marlboro. Just I'm glad that we weren't examples of the bad ones, I think. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
I believe that's Tim Lit.
Yep. He should be all set.
I'm not sure if it's Tim Lit or.
It's actually. Infling, yep. No worries. I'm 18 Main Street. I would like to, as well as the Connells comment, I would like to have you guys consider my property for being included in the downtown district. It was historically a tavern, so this used to actually be a business here back in the, you know, the original days, as I understand it. So I would like to be considered to still be included in the downtown district as well. And I am surrounded or in front of me anyway, by a business right there. And two properties over to my right is also another business. So I'm kind of already surrounded by it with headlights facing my property at night anyway, with cars exiting from the business in front of me. So yeah, I would just like to also be considered and I'd be open to an A and a B. If you guys would be interested in A and B zoning for this, where A is by right and B could be a, you know, Board of Appeals, but all just be considered in the district itself. So if that's something that the board would be open to, I'd be interested in if that could be an amendable solution that we'd be able to be included in the district, but not maybe by right and we just have to go through our appeals process. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question of, of both parties that want to be included in the expanded district. And that has to do with really the the art and the science of a zoning change at town meeting. Would you what, what, what do you think about having the district stay exactly as it is or not, certainly not expanding your properties at this time? And have those addressed at a later date if the downtown district is successful, it's passed? And then address the issue of expanding the district? I have heard that people are saying, keep it simple. Let's just focus on what we have. And then get that accomplished. And then if people want to expand the district, that would be a separate issue. So I'm just curious how you would feel about separating the, this expansion to another time and another effort.
I'm happy to jump in since I still seem to be unmuted here. This is Tim, 18 Main Street still. I would prefer everything happened on the upfront side of this, that it's all clear from the beginning and not something that's an addition later on. I know that there's other things about the map that weren't desirable to some of the other neighbors that were also brought up in the past. I think it's kind of cleaner just to get it right on the first pass and not go through this process necessarily a second time. Just with kind of how the reviews go and how the process takes, I think it'd be faster and more efficient. We got it right at the beginning.
Hi, this is Kristen Cornell. I feel differently. I'm perfectly fine with Southborough pursuing the business overlay at town meeting first. And then having an opportunity to come before you at some point in the future to ask to be included in the business district. I am in support of the business district and I'm in support of what's best for the future of Southborough. So if that's the best way that you can get the district passed through town meeting, the Cannells are all for it.
Thank you. Anyone else, Sarah?
Yes.
Hello, Planning Board. Good evening. Kevin Miller, 18 Latosquama. And I'd just like to ask the, the Planning Board if in fact, there's been any consideration, any discussion, any thought, any internal conversation or movement regarding the proposition that I made at your last meeting on July 19, which I'm happy to reiterate, but I think everybody here is familiar with it. Again, with regard to the map. And specifically the split lots and, and the solution that I proposed. And I asked this because I'm just a little, you know, we had these hearings and everyone is very kind to listen and then I, I don't understand really where it goes. So I, I very much like to hear the thoughts of any Planning Board member that, that care to comment.
Sarah, can you put up the the maps that you made? The different versions? I think there were four of them.
Yes, I can, yep.
We'll see if this is if this, if people think that this is adding any clarity or showing progress toward different options. When I looked at the maps, it seemed like it's a, it's a great beginning to see what these different ideas would, would look like on a new map. Anyone else from the board have any comment back to Mr. Miller's question? Yeah, go, go ahead, Marnie.
Yeah, no, I, I thought Mr. Miller's suggestion was just, it was innovative and just a way to help resolve some of the, the challenges, particularly for some of those split lot people. So I, I think we, the whole process is to hopefully invite innovation and alternative thinking. And I think that's what it did. I think Kevin, just from the perspective of what we do is we, we can't actually engage in other conversations. So what happens is what's here and what you're witnessing. So what else works is Chairman Morris will work with Karina or Sarah to kind of think about how to noodle that around. And then that's all shared and discussed in a public forum. So this is kind of it where we, we have it. And so the purpose is really, we have 24 guests today. It's to hear what people think about this proposal. Oftentimes people come, they listen, then that's it. And then we move on to our next subject. And that's pretty much what happens for us as well. So I think if, if the conversation, if people want to bring it, we invite innovation, we invite a debate and different opinions because ultimately if it is going to go to town meeting, I think it needs to be a robust proposal that's been well vetted. But certainly town meeting, if any of you do attend town meeting, can also be a place where it gets vetted as well. And people can put in alternative suggestions to language and things can change on the floor. So what we're hoping to do is resolve any of that beforehand. And then if there is something, a plan that we can all put forward and agree to, you know, I don't know if that's going to be the case or not.
So Sarah, Sarah created these mockups that you can, and, and these are on the website, right, Sarah?
Um, these are, I don't know that they are at this point, but I can definitely put them up after tonight.
I would recommend that these, these mockups be put on the website so that the neighbors can look at them and comment on them by, make, or make recommendations. And these would be initial working points for the different options that we have or could have relative to the split lots and adding lots. So on.
So I thought this. Okay, for some reason that, that first mockup is having, giving us a little trouble loading, but the second one is completely loaded, which is odd. So this is a mockup of the proposed downtown district. Um, so this is uh, a mockup of the proposed downtown district excluding all split lots. So there's, you know, definitely been a lot of discussion in regards to um, the split lots here. Um, and so, and there's actually one split lot here. So you can see underneath um, you know, the district shape, uh, and then the purple is drawing the outline as if it were um, only the whole lots excluding those split lots. Uh, this next mockup is for the proposed downtown district, including all of the split lots. So we're talking about including those all. Um, you know, coming around here, you know, this sort of this larger parcel, um, that parcel uh, as well, you know, those ones that just have maybe just a bit of the existing district in them. Hmm. And apologies, my screen seems to have gone blank.
So I think that Mr. Miller's question was all of these, you know, suggestions that we had back in July. Whatever happens to them, they just float around or what? But this is one of the things that happened.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I appreciate that. Um, it, uh, can we scroll back to the purple, the map in the shades of purple?
Yes.
Which is, of course, most closely reflects um, what I proposed, um, with the exception maybe of the thirty-five Boston Road property, which is, you know, it's a split lot right through the, the homeowner's swimming pool, which we probably want to clean up and get out of there. Um, the only uh, other thing I'd add to that is that I, I'm not sure why the, the um, CSX parcel that is at the end of uh, Park would be included. Um, I personally, um, I, I don't see why CSX really needs to be made a gift of by right zoning. Um, that would clean up the map uh, quite nicely, uh, keep the, the um, downtown district centered along um, Maine, East Maine, Newton, and the viable parcels on Boston Road, um, and it would get it out of the places it has no business being. Um, meaning the seven split lots and the CSX parcel that um, don't have frontage and extend um, beyond the pay portion of Park Street. Um, so I'm, I'm glad that, that thought's being put into this and, and it, it seems a very simple and elegant solution because like, once again, there are two points I would, I would um, reiterate is number one, this is not an overlay, right? This is by, by, as a matter of law, it's a brand new zoning district and a brand new map. Um, and so it makes sense to make it clean and correct. And in, in removing the split lots, you, and leaving them in the existing business village district, you would be denying no one their rights, taking nothing away from anybody, um, but what you would be conferring to the future owners of those properties and all the abutters is the stability and protection that Mr. Hokinson has um, very articulately spoken about um, in a previous meeting. Um, for future owners, their neighbors and the neighborhood at large. Um, by removing the opportunity for any future um, mischief. Um, which is not going to, if, if that were to happen, it would impact not only the, the residents of Latosquama, but uh, most assuredly the residents of Foley, Peggy, Birchwood, and McNeil Drives. Um, and I think they're aware of it. Because the only way to access uh, some of those properties ultimately because of issues of wetlands um, and access to the CSX uh, parcel, the only way to get to them is going to be down Foley Drive. Um, and so I think the larger um, neighborhood should be mighty concerned, and I think they will be going forward. And so I, I very much encourage the planning board and appreciate the fact that you are um, amendable to looking at this mapping issue seriously and not just rubber stamping the easy way out, which is to pretend that this new district is somehow an overlay on an old map, because if not, again, it's the creation of a new map as a matter of law. I think that was um, um, been established very early on by the town planner and by um, Attorney Costa um, in public comments. So again, thank you for your time.
So if we put, go ahead, Mimi.
I just have a process question, Mr. Chairman. Um, at some point soon, I would hope with, is it the intention that the planning board um, take a vote on preference of a map and send that to the Board of Selectmen so we can get the map issue uh, settled and move on to the substance of the zoning code change?
Yeah, and I think the intent uh, when Sarah created those uh, mockups was to make them available to the public and let the public um, make suggestions relative to them. They're, they're a starting point. And then as we all would look at them and hear comments relative to them, we would form our opinion. And um, I would imagine that that would probably be um, hopefully by the end of September, the board would have as much uh, input at that point to um, know or feel comfortable on where to go with the map. I also think that um, those design guidelines need to be available before our next continued hearing. It's a complete package, as we said, it's the code, it's the design guidelines, and it's the map. And they all, they all have to be um, in draft or final draft for us, for the planning board to um, express our opinion going forward. And then probably in the month of October, the final documents would be uh, refined and um, made available to the public as a uh, warrant article. Did I answer your question, Mimi?
Yes, thank you very much. And I do expect that there will be design guidelines uh, for the next hearing.
And I, I again would invite the public, once we put those mockups on the, the website, the town website, to go in and look at them and um, feel free during the timeframe between now and the continued public hearing to um, make suggestions. Positives, negatives, whatever. Who's next?
Um, I'm going to Kate and Nancy.
Hi, hi, this is Kate speaking. Uh, thank you for uh, having us here tonight, the public. Uh, I would like to echo uh, Mr. Miller and uh, to thank Chairman Morris for the development along with your colleagues. Uh, oh, also, we live at fourteen Birchwood Drive here in Southborough. Thank uh, you and your colleagues at uh, Town Hall for developing uh, this choice of maps. Um, uh, we, I am uh, speaking here with Nancy. Um, in support of leaving uh, Foley, uh, that cul-de-sac area out of uh, the changed map area. Um, the main reason we wanted to speak to this was that this is our neighborhood. Uh, we've lived here since, I guess, two thousand and two for quite a while. And I, I, I think of this as the lived experience that we want to share with the planning board, that um, if this were to uh, undergo this type of zoning change, the whole character and experience in the neighborhood for all of our neighbors and our homeowners um, that use this area like every single day, every time of day, would be irreparably changed in a way that would be negative because we would have so much more traffic um, than ever, than we've ever had. And it's a really cute little neighborhood. Uh, we're excited to see some of the changes that are occurring through this thinking about the downtown area. Um, but I think sometimes projects can get project creep built in that would not necessarily be good for all of the town. So um, I'm just uh, really grateful to have the opportunity to speak in opposition to um, doing a major project that would actually be harmful to many of your neighbors that live um, amongst our streets, Birchwood, McNeil, Foley, and Peggy, and Latosquama. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Sarah?
Yes, we have Michael.
Michael Waishen.
Exactly. Good evening, planning board. Nice to see you again.
Good evening.
I just wanted to chime in. Uh, Don, you look somewhere bucolic. Have you uh, gone off to the North Woods?
Um, yeah, a little bit north. We have a place on a lake in Groton, Mass. And um, yeah, you can see, see the sun go, go down behind me.
Exactly, it was great. Um, I just wanted to chime in here briefly. Um, as you know, um, we have a meeting on the nineteenth coming up this Thursday about the National Register District. Uh, this has been a work of ten years uh, to get the downtown Main Street listed on the National Register. I want to thank my late deceased colleague Kate Madison for starting this process. We miss her terribly. And it's very sad that she didn't live to see the fruition of this. But this, this nomination will put all of these buildings on the National Register and allow them to be, uh, to have access to federal tax credits, federal funds potentially for some of the city properties. Um, and listing also on the State Register, which would have made changes, say, to the Town Hall windows and things, a much easier and less expensive process. So it's really a win-win for everyone involved. What I'm concerned about is these, is the lack of this guide, of these guidelines. Um, early on in the process, the Historical Commission was consulted uh, briefly uh, in a single meeting about this, maybe two years ago. And was never consulted again about what these guidelines might look like. And considering that this nomination is about to go forward, and this is the most historic part of Southborough. Um, it's a little frightening to me that we would be moving forward on this without actually having these guidelines and the, and who would be the authority of these guidelines clearly delineated beforehand. Also, I'm hugely concerned about this, the ability of not having this map also set in place uh, before we go forward on this, having the ability of, of individual property owners to elect themselves into a zoning district. Um, seems unheard of to me. And uh, I just think uh, without some input on what this, these buildings and what this development is supposed to look like, we really run the risk of damaging what's left of our downtown. Now, it's interesting that Mr. Hokinson pointed out that Northborough considers that big yellow building on Southville Road and eighty-five as one of our successes. That's actually one of our epic failures because that building was built out to the maximum extent of its lot. It has been a financial, uh, it's gone through multiple owners and it's been a financial loss uh, considerably because it's been vacant for a large portion of its time. Um, and it replaced an historic structure that was much more appropriate in scale, the old blacksmith shop and the old Ipanema restaurant, which some of you may remember. Um, if that's what these guidelines indicate for downtown, we are in trouble. So I would urge you uh, as a board, to make sure that we have an absolutely clear and concise vision of what these guidelines are going to be. And that there is a mechanism to make sure that these guidelines are enforceable and not just a wish list of like, oh, well, we would like you to do these things, but if you don't, oh, too bad, because there's nothing we can do about it. So I think, I think it's very important that before this goes to town meeting, these factors are, are clearly delineated to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Sarah?
Yes, there's one additional individual just marked as AE. Could you please tell us your name and address? Oh. Guess they decided they didn't want to talk.
I think he was trying to unmute himself.
Um.
See if he comes back.
I don't see them in the attendees anymore, but we, we can wait for a second.
Yeah, he's.
I, I don't see anyone else with their hand raised, and I'm not really certain what happened to that other individual.
Any more comments from the planning board relative to the process or uh, the maps or, or anything? Anybody? If no one else wants to speak, um, it might be appropriate to uh, continue the public hearing.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We continue the public hearing to uh, September, I'm looking at, September thirteenth uh, twenty twenty-one at uh, seven ten.
Seven fifteen.
Oh, seven fifteen, okay.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Will's yes.
We're trying. The hand, yes.
Very good. We'll see you on the thirteenth. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, twenty-eight Boston Road. Modification to major site plan. As the town planner to read the public hearing notice.
Okay. This is the public hearing notice for modification of major site plan approval. Per section one seventy-four dash ten of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one at seven twenty P M. To consider the application of Charles and Jean Black, Kendall Homes, Inc., for modification to major site plan approval regarding the property located at twenty-eight Boston Road, assessors map fifty-five, parcel one twenty, via remote Zoom meeting. Public hearing concerns modifications to the approved lighting and landscaping. Original major site plan along with special permits with flexible development and lower impact development were approved on January eighth, two thousand eighteen. A copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the planning board's webpage. HTTPS www.southboroughtown.com slash planning dashboard, or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. In accordance with Senate Bill number two four seven five, this meeting will be held virtually, no in-person attendance by the public. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to www.southboroughtown.com slash remote meetings. Donald C. Marsh, Chair Planning Board.
Well, Karina, tell, tell us what has been submitted.
Sure.
And where we are with it. And then we'll go to um, the proponent, Mr. Black.
Okay, um, as you recall, because um, at a prior meeting, it was discussed that uh, the landscaping and lighting would not require um, personal review um, at this time. Uh, Kendall Holmes made a submission um, on July nineteenth. Uh, they were filed with the town clerk once the application was complete on July twenty-seventh. The legal notice was published in uh, the newspaper on August second. The legal notice was published in the newspaper on August second and August ninth for opening at this evening's planning board meeting for public hearing. Legal as we sent it to town agencies. Mr. Black and his wife Jean were supplied the legal ad, which they mailed out. We received the green cards on Monday, August ninth, well in advance of the Thursday before the meeting deadline, which we really appreciate. So it gives us a chance to check those. We have not received any comments from the town departments to which that submission was provided. And that brings us to this evening and the Blacks have provided, in, in addition, I just want to point out, in addition to the submission that we received earlier, updated photo plan was provided as well last week, of which we have a hard copy as well. And that brings us to this evening.
And we also received two letters. One from Father Albert and one from the immediate butter to the church.
Yeah. Was that in the initial submission or was that after the fact? Because I was out last week.
Uh, no, that was, uh, it was after the fact. We did receive two positive letters of support and those are on the drop box for the planning board.
Okay. And then we also received some clarification in the light specification in an email today, which we forwarded the planning board.
And who's going to put the plan up on the, on the screen?
Sarah, are you able?
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Chuck.
Sarah, are you able to do that?
I'm actually gonna ask Marnie to assist me. Unfortunately, my bandwidth here in I guess seems to be all soaked up by streaming this live at the moment. So thank you so much, Marnie, for your help.
Yep. So do you want the photometric plan or the actual plan plan?
The actual plan.
Okay. The lighting and landscaping. Sorry, I'm just trying to look through sort which one it is in the drop box.
That looks good.
It would be number three, item number three. See the initial numbers?
Yes, photometric. Yeah. Can you just tell me which one it is in the drop box? Because I've got like eighty-five things here.
The fourth one, the fourth one on the top.
Yep, that's what I had. So then what page?
Um, I believe it's only one sheet.
That, that, that plan is correct.
But this is it.
So that's the site plan that, that it's a modified site plan showing areas to the landscaping and the light.
Do you want to speak to that, Chuck, at all?
Yes, I would if I could. Good evening, everyone. My wife Jean is sitting here with me. And we reside at Fort William Clary Lane in Southborough, walking distance from condos we built at twenty-eight Boston Road. And we had the pleasure of meeting with the board on June sixteenth, I believe. And we have gone through the process of being here tonight for the public hearing. And so what we are proposing is instead of thirty-eight arbivites helping screen the condos from mostly the church, we have worked with the Follies who reside in twenty-four A and who are also parishioners at the church. And so we discussed that twenty-three would do a very nice job of screening because we preserve so many trees along the property line. And the board suggested at June sixteenth that we speak to Father Albert and get a letter of his support, which we got that on August eighth as well as a letter of support from Mr. Foley and his wife who live at twenty-four A. And so I believe that speaks to what we want to do on the vegetation. The original site plan had the arbivites going down quite a bit further towards Boston Road. But again, we preserve trees there and also this, this ledge along the lot line there that would make it difficult to plant the plants we want to put in. So we've spent a fair amount of time thinking about it, talking to the people it affects the most. And that's yeah, and also my wife's pointing out, we don't want to come too close to Boston Road and affect sightline. So that is the proposal on the plants. And then on the lighting, originally, the property called for eight post lights. We're proposing putting in seven. One of the post lights that was near twenty-eight and thirty Boston Road would have been a problem during snow removal. And when my wife selected the lights for the condos, they're, I'll call them a gooseneck.
Yeah.
A gooseneck light fixture. So we're proposing putting seven post lights twelve feet tall, not fourteen, so it doesn't look quite as industrial, and having the gooseneck light fixture so it looks more residential than industrial. And we've gone through the photometric process to make sure that we comply to code. And I think that recaps it.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to the planning board members. Mr. Mills?
You guys hearing?
We got you now, Andrew.
All right. Sorry about that. Were you, were you going to me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Black, thanks for that update and all the work you've done for the discussion we had, you know, a while back. Appreciate it. Greatly appreciate letters of support from the neighbors about the reduction of the trees and everything. And again, because you weren't the original applicant for this project, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that the changes that were made were agreed to by the butters. And I can appreciate you doing, going through those steps. You know, I, I don't have any questions from what you're proposing. I think I agree with the sightlines of, I go by the property quite often. I have no questions.
All set, Andrew?
I'm all set.
Mrs. Lutrow.
Uh, good evening. Thank you. Um, with the exception of the reduction in the number of arbivites, is the rest of the landscaping going to be planted as proposed on the previous landscape plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay, but it hasn't been completed as of yet?
That is correct. The majority of the plants are there. All the irrigation is working. All the plants are healthy. And my wife and I are maintaining the property. Of course, we live walking distance to it. And some of the plantings I haven't done yet because I want to first put the berm in this construction season and then back up the berm with loom and then put the plants in so that they're not getting damaged.
And where, I'm sorry, where is the berm?
Well, basically, uh, I don't, can't point on this, but you know, you have a horseshoe sort of driveway and I need to put, yeah, there you go, berm around and on the, and also outside of the pavement. So, um, and again, we're scheduled to do that work this month or next month so that we can hopefully complete everything in this construction season.
Okay. So the, the flowers that are on the previous plan down by Boston Road, those will be planted?
They will. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And what size arbivites are you proposing? It's not on the plan.
I am proposing to install arbivites about four to five feet tall. And again, because we're working on a slope there and the conditions are difficult to work, I'd like to install arbivites that are about four to five feet tall.
So the original plants were six to seven feet?
That is correct.
And my other question, um, the existing trees that you have noted on the plans, most of them are either right on the property line or not, are on church property, so you don't have hundred percent control of those. So I don't so those couldn't be included in the landscape plan if they can potentially be taken down?
Well, again, we preserved as many trees as we could. When our surveyor went out there, he identified more than one hundred trees that were on our property. He said it was too many to put on plan and list.
So, so we got a letter from a landscaper saying a hundred seedlings and saplings. Is that what you're referring to?
That, yes. And but again, there are also mature trees that are there. Again, on the June sixteenth meeting, we brought up photos showing how thick the vegetation is.
So there are there mature trees other than the existing trees that are listed on the plan?
Well, we haven't planted any new mature trees on the lot line. We, we've preserved what was there. And again, right now, again, if we, I don't know, Sarah, if we can still bring up those photos we had from June sixteenth. But, um, you know, it's, the vegetation is very thick.
Right. So I went out there and I, and I looked. And as I said, it looked like most of the, the mature trees that were remaining were either right on the line, which means you share ownership with the church or on the church property, which means you have no control over them. And my concern is seedlings and saplings. The percentage of those that make it to mature trees, minuscule. And I don't know how there's like a large, yeah, the grass area that we're seeing there, I didn't see anything, any trees or any type of vegetation there at all. So are you going to be maintaining the seedlings and saplings so they grow to maturity?
They get watered.
Yeah, the irrigation's going to continue watering them. And the other thing is this picture that's up on the screen now, which that's getting down near Boston Road. I don't know if we can look at some of the other pictures. And there's some more pictures than that. They show it very thick.
Right. So that was, that was, those trees that you see are.
So there's a picture there. And since this picture was taken, that lawn that's in, we've mowed, we've mowed that lawn three or four times. And on the right of this picture, you can see my signs there that are the open space. So you, you know, you only have one little area really between the church and twenty-four A that doesn't have that many trees now. And that's where a lot of these new trees are going to be planted, a new arbivites.
Maybe would it help you to see the original approved plan?
Um, I have it.
You have it. Okay.
Um, just so those pictures, the, I mean, the vegetation that's in the open space is, that'll all be preserved. But the vegetation that's on church property, you have no control of. And there was talk at our previous, when this original project was permitted, that the church was given that piece of property and there was thought of maybe expanding their parish center. So if they did that, all of those trees would come down. Or, you know, you'd have no control over any buffer that's not on their property. So my concern is reducing landscaping, putting in smaller trees and not having existing trees under your control. My last question is, what's the correlated color temperature of the new proposed lights?
Do you know that, Jean?
I do not, but it is, um, good evening. We have asked the company that we are buying the lights from to, we, I gave them a copy or I sent them what the town's regulations were, and he followed everything. Um, I have to get my sheet. Hang on a second. And actually, I get sent it to Karina this morning.
Yeah, Jean, it's my understanding, based on the specs that you provided, I believe it's three thousand degrees Kelvin.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. That is it. It is three thousand degree Kelvin.
If you look at the second page of the spec, Mimi, about halfway down, it gives you ordering information. And the third column has twenty LED five twenty-five m amps with a three thousand K color temperature.
Correct. Okay. Um, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, milliamps.
Thank you.
This is Hula Hand.
I had no questions. Thank you.
Um, anyone from the public? Because I'm good too. Anyone from the public?
Yes, we do. Freddie?
And we currently have nine attendees.
Freddie, you should be all set.
And am I unmuted now? Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And we were unable to have a meeting to review this before the hearing between the time we got notified. So I guess I'll be speaking as an individual who sat through quite a few meetings with the prior original owner. And as you know, that the Open Space Preservation Commission is very committed to having native plants be used in the landscaping. We had those discussions back when this was being proposed. And my concern is there are, from what I read, and I didn't go take a site walk, and our committee has not reviewed, but from my perspective of prior conversations we've had, that saying that there are seedlings or saplings to make up the difference of what was to be planted, they at a minimum need to be identified on a plan and what kind of tree. Because as we all know, what's most likely to come in are invasive species. Thick vegetation can be full of invasive. Thick vegetation can be full of invasives. There's no way of knowing unless you do an inspection. Is it buckthorn? Is that multiflora rose? I guess somebody would have to take a look at that. But tiny seedlings and saplings do not a tree make and are no guarantee that a tree would, grow to maturity in that location, especially if there's hundreds of them. Not as many are going to make it. And how do you know which ones? So I would say you need to clearly identify which trees are there. And I would also say it's, it's nice that the neighbors are in agreement, but landscaping and zoning isn't between two property owners. It's, it's a requirement of the town for the whole town. And there's value there. Um, I know when you're doing the planning, it's often between, you know, protecting, uh, abutters. But that plan has already been set in stone. And people move or changes are made to the church or there's a new owner living next door. And I think there was many, many hearings on how this property was to be landscaped. And I think just to change it now doesn't do service to the many meetings we had back when it was being proposed. And I think you need to clearly say what trees are there, what size they are, who's going to ma- manage them? In three years, what's going to be there? If there's small trees and saplings, they're easy to mow over. So I think you need a little bit more definition of what kind of trees are going to make up the trees they're not going to plant at the minimum or plant the trees. And if the trees on the slope don't work, I believe that sort of thing would have been considered when we were doing the original, um, site plan. But you know, substitute with another tree that's a native that would fit the location better, but don't just not plant anything would be my position as an individual citizen. Who will have my Open Space Commission, uh, meet if we can before your next hearing on this, if you don't close it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, you're all set?
Uh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Dan Farley. So I live at, uh, 24A Boston Road. So I would be, um, the property that is adjacent to the property line, that is adjacent to, uh, St. Anne's Church. I'm also a parishioner, uh, know Father Albert very well. Um, so I obviously have a vested interest in all this because I live right there. And also parishioners who want to make sure that everybody in, uh, not only on those two properties, but everyone in the entire area is, uh, is happy and that this is a, uh, a, a, a nice, beautiful site for the community. So, uh, I am in favor of everything that Chuck Black has, has shown. Um, someone that's very familiar to this because I, I see this, uh, every, every day when I, I look out the window. Uh, really, um, the only change from a landscaping perspective, uh, that Chuck Black has proposed from the original, uh, is the, uh, the number of arborvitae's and the, the area on the original plan. And I, I don't know why that was the case. It would be almost impossible to plant some of those trees as they go down Boston Road because there's a significant ledge there, which is actually pretty aesthetically pleasing. It's very natural and it, it looks, it looks good. Um, so I don't think you would want to have, you know, planned trees, giant arborvitae in an area that is a natural area of, of, of stone that looks, uh, looks very nice. And there's also the prior owner planning some, that is, that is on the, um, uh, our property, uh, the development property of some wildflowers and everything in that stone ledge area. So it really would be a shame to, to rip that up, to remove ledge that's very aesthetically pleasing to, to put in, you know, arborvitae just because that was the original count. Uh, and then there's a few trees along the back which extend kind of into the field area, which didn't really make sense, those on the, on the far right where that pointer is. Those don't really make sense because it's kind of giant field with several kids, uh, young children in amongst the six developments that, you know, they, they run around that area. Um, so it doesn't really make sense to, to plant trees in the middle of the field. So as, as someone that, uh, so really that's the only change. The conversation about the 100 seedlings and saplings, that really, nothing is really changing there. It's just the, the count of the trees. And, and it makes sense that, you know, we, we've spent a lot of time working with Chuck and talking to landscapers and talking to the, the church about what is going to be the most aesthetically pleasing and, and, uh, that all, that is all wh- what we've come to as, as a group. So I'm in favor of, uh, uh, everything Chuck has proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Karina, are we able to, um, at this point, uh, close the public hearing and have a motion to approve the modification?
I believe yes. There is no more public comment. We haven't received any other town department comments.
Chuck, did you want to, um, render an opinion relative to, um, what the next step is here tonight? Can't hear you. Still muted, there you go.
Hi there. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Can you, Jean and I want to thank everybody for your time tonight. And, um, again, we're long-term residents in Southport. We walk by the property every day. We've given it a lot of thought. And, um, I think Dan Farley has, you know, recapped it very succinctly. And, uh, Jean and I would love to be able to have the board consider closing the public hearing tonight and approving what we proposed so we can get this work done in this construction season. So once again, we thank you for your consideration.
Is, um, is the board, the approval period goes beyond our next meeting. Goes to September 26th. So we'd either entertain a motion to continue the public hearing and have a reason to do that or to, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And then, um, a motion to approve. What is the, uh, desire of the higher?
I would just, just real quickly, I would just want to point out to you that, um, the decision for the modification will include that prior, um, conditions still hold under the major site plan. Um, in regards to the planning board having, you know, one year to check out the lighting. Adequate or too much as it's a standard type of condition. So those types of things, if you'd like me to include those, uh, I can do that.
Andrew, were you going to go?
Yeah, I, I have one question. I recall one of the last times we met, the discussion of if we do reduce the number of trees, that either some of those trees might go somewhere else in town or, uh, work with the DPW, I believe it was. All right. Is, is that happening?
I'll answer the question that was discussed, uh, on June 16th. I have not taken any, um, action on that. What I would, uh, be pleased to do, because my wife and I would like to see a little more colorful, um, plants of the property. What we could do is along the open space where I have my signs, I was thinking it might be very nice to put, uh, some additional flowering, uh, shrubs there, um, on some of the ones that we're not putting in as arborvitae. And that would demarc further the line that we preserved, preserve that open space line and put some color in the back of that property. But I'm also trying not to overcomplicate things.
That's, that's nice. I think the, uh, the open space is already sheltered enough. I was wondering more if, if there was a place, because I think you might be aware too, that we, um, the Southport Tree Program, the planning board worked very hard to, uh, put in place and that if there was something with DPW needed in lieu of you planting numerous trees, uh, I think that might be beneficial.
And I, and I guess my answer there is that again, with Jean and I, long-term residents, we would like to be helpful and do that.
So how many trees would you donate, Chuck?
Why, why don't we say 10?
And the details of that will be worked out, uh, with the town planner?
Yes.
I'll set, uh, Mr. Mills with that question?
I am. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Comments? Yes, uh, Mimi, I think you want first. Go ahead.
Um, just that it should be clear the size of the, uh, trees that are being proposed because the prior plan is larger than what's intended to be planted. And also if there are wildflowers on that ledge to somehow figure out what's growing there to, uh, preserve those because that could be part of the landscaping plan also. And I like the idea of the trees planted other places in town, as long as they're native.
Marnie?
Uh, my question was just around the, sorry, I'm getting feedback. The existing plan now doesn't necessarily specify. So we're changing from the original landscape and lighting to a revised. Do we have a new plan that indicates the updated landscaping? I know we, we see the 23 arborvitae and the seven proposed lamp, but are, have you provided a complete plan for us that indicates similar to what the original, what you would be planting, the size, much to what Mimi had mentioned?
We're, we're going to do everything that was on the original plan. The only plant change is instead of 38 arborvitae, 23.
And I think that's, isn't that on a new plan? We presented.
Yeah, on, on the new plan, it shows the 23 arborvitae. The rest of the plans, we're doing as planned, as approved.
Okay. So I guess that goes back to Mimi's comment that you've mentioned four to five, the arborvitae, four to five, um, feet versus what was on the original plan. So it's just being able to document that and maybe Karina, that's within the conditions?
Yeah, I was just looking at the existing, uh, the originally approved plan and it just says giant green arborvitae's, but the planting table indicated, um, hold on, let me just quickly look here.
Hold it up.
Three, uh, six to seven feet in height. So maybe if they added, um, a supplemental planting table to the proposed modification plan? So if you look at the planting table in the bottom left corner, what's on your screen? Um, the arborvitae, it basically lists the quantity. There you go. So you'll see under trees, um, there's 63 arborvitae's proposed. So that would be reduced by the difference between 38 to 23. Um, there's your Latin name and it says six to seven height and you're proposing four to five feet. So perhaps an updated, um, planting table, uh, reflecting the change.
That's fine. We can submit that.
If that's satisfactory to the planning board. I mean, the, the modified plan wouldn't show all the symbols, but it could refer back to the original plan saying that it's this line item that has changed to this size and number. Just a thought.
Go ahead, Mimi.
I know that the, um, arborvitae's on the other side are planted. Are those the original size, six to seven?
Yes.
They appear to be.
Yes.
So maybe just have another line item for the 23 at four to five.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, Freddie, does Heather hand up, um, one more? Just to be clear, Mimi, you wanted, uh, the planting table to just show an added line to it with the 23 that will be fa- four to five feet in height. And then the 63 will be, be reduced by that number.
Right.
Is that clear, Chuck?
Yes. Yep.
Just making sure.
Thank you.
Was I asked to, to speak? I'm sorry, a box came up.
Yeah, you heard it, Henrys?
Yes. Um, Freddie Gillespie again. I'm wondering if in that same area that you're mentioning this change shape, size of the arborvitae, if there could be some language about the area where you're saying there's wildflowers growing on the ledge so that that doesn't become a mowed lawn in the future? If that is a planned, um, somewhat of a substitution for the trees? You're saying you like the way the ledge looks and there's some flowers growing there?
That would be fine.
And that wouldn't have to be on a plan as much as you, if the planning board didn't require it, um, somehow mentioned in the language you're writing about the trees? If there's a place for that?
That would be fine and we'll just have Curtis Landscape. I'll instruct them to preserve that.
So just to be clear, that's a note on the plan or a, a note in the decision?
Should be on the plan.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I can motion, we close the public hearing for 28 Boston Post Road modification to major site plan.
Second, Boston Road.
Oh, sorry, Boston.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Marvis, yes?
Mills, yes.
Let's roll. Hula Hand, yes.
We've closed the public hearing. We should probably hear a motion to, uh, approve the modify- modification, the modified plan. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I can motion, we approve the modified plan for 28 Boston Road. Uh, modification for major site plan as discussed with additions this evening.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are you all set with that motion, Karina? And, uh, I, I think you kept good track of, um, those things that were just agreed to.
Yes, I have it.
Okay. So the motion to approve, any questions, comments? All in favor? Marvis, yes?
Well, sorry, just for clarity, Karina, could you just go right through that list so we know what we're talking?
Sure. Um, in the decision, we will add that 10 trees will be donated of native species to the town in, um, locations as determined with the DPW. locations as determined with the DPW, in lieu of reduction in the number of trees. On the plans, we will add a line item. They will add a line item to the planting table with 23 arborvitae, four to five feet tall. Then a note will be added to the plan that will say that the wildflowers on the ledge will be preserved and not be mowed, something to that extent. In addition to the plantings out of there that are proposed.
Great, thank you.
So on the motion to approve, any more questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Karina will prepare the decision document and have it finalized between myself and the proponent and then submitted to the town clerk in the near future.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Good time.
Next item on the agenda is approval not required. 135 Deerfoot Road, put it up on the screen. Based on the note on the A and R, the purpose of the A and R is to create two lots from one.
Logging in here? No. So this is an application for approval not required that was submitted by Kendall Holmes, which is Chuck Black, his wife Jean, who were just on. The application was filed on August 3, 2021. This is 135 Deerfoot Road, if you recall. The two lots in question were, would be, have originally been the house that was owned by Peter Dowd, where the barn was taken from and reconstructed at Chestnut Hill Farm. And the property, the buildings, they were raised. And I reviewed this plan in detail with Connor Stone's engineer, Verusian Gopian, and he made some minor changes. And we found, we got to the point where the plan is acceptable, and to the best of my knowledge, is in proper format.
So Sarah, can you point to the line or lines that were, that were put on this plan to that are changed, that have changed the original plan?
So Sarah, if you bring your mouse around the perimeter.
So it's Marnie controlling the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marnie. I could share it too. Yeah, that's, that was the original lot. 135. And what they did is they split the line, they added a line right down, basically the middle. There are current driveway openings in the existing stone wall, if they are reusing those as Deerfoot Road is a scene of in this section of the week. I have to confirm that.
Don't mind my inability to draw a straight line.
So that's the line that necessitates the A and R? And does that say 1,000 feet?
Yes, these are very deep.
1,104 feet, that's got to be, it's got to be one of the deepest lots in the whole town. Any questions or comments, Mr. Mills?
I just want to make sure that there was enough frontage. I mean, I know there probably is grain, as you looked at it, but just to verbalize it for the record. 124. I couldn't see it with my old age eyes, so.
So this is, and Verusian is here, we can always upgrade him to answer the questions. I also have a very small.
He is.
I'm going to promote him.
That was my only question.
I'll set, Andrew?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mrs. Latrell?
I'm all set.
Ms. Houlihan?
I'm set.
Mr. Mills?
Hold on a second.
So this is a residential A zone, which requires 150 feet of frontage. And that's noted on the plan and on the, yeah, right there with Marnie circling, it's actually calling out the frontage of 150 feet and 150 feet.
Thank you. I make a motion. We approve the A and R for 135 Deerfoot Road as requested by the applicant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell? Houlihan, yes?
Very good. So Karina, you'll have us come into the town hall to sign the A and R.
And the endorsement form.
Right, and the form. Hopefully, we can all get in there at some point this week.
Yeah, I will send out, Sarah and I will send out an email.
Okay.
And then we'll let you know when it's ready.
Okay. Okay, very good. Next item on the agenda is an A and R, 3 Outwood Street. Do you know that one, Marnie?
Yep. Sorry, I was thinking I was already sharing it. Yes, it's up, hold on.
What a team effort this is.
Thank you so much again.
Nice to have two monitors.
Did you want to speak to this, Karina?
Sure, very briefly. Again, Verusian's here from Connor Stone as the engineer of record. As you recall, we previously, the planning board previously endorsed A and R for 3 Outwood Street. And the applicant is back, Sandra Coligan, because there was a slight error in distance from the septic tank in the rear of the lot. So if you look at the house, there is a small strip that has been added to the, to the number three house in order to have distance to the tank of at least 10 feet, which is required by 105. So they're back in front of us to simply revise that line. And Verusian, if you have anything else to add or want to correct, you just speak up.
No, that's pretty much it.
Nothing else has changed, right?
Nothing else has changed. We just are swapping that parcel A to the, the front lot, and we're renaming the lots 1A and 2A to notify the change. That's it.
Open it up to the planning board, Mr. Mills?
No questions.
Mrs. Latrell?
Uh, no.
Mrs. Houlihan?
No questions.
Any questions from the public?
I do not see any hands raised on this topic.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the A and R as at 3 Outwood Street as requested by the applicant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just got to say, I think that's the fastest we've done two A and Rs ever.
Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell? Houlihan, yes?
No, it's the fastest. Next item on the agenda. Oh, same thing. You guys will send us an email when it's ready for us to come in and sign.
Yes.
Item on the agenda is a discussion item, open space monitoring report for FY '23 update.
Yes, just quickly. I'm still reviewing the report to make sure everything's accurate and working with the Lucas Environmental. The report is substantially complete, but we'd like to review it a final time to make sure there's, you know, it's right to the point and what we need. It's also giving Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, an opportunity to review it as well. So both of us are reviewing it, and it's our, it's my intent to have Lucas Environmental attend the next planning board meeting in September to provide a presentation as early in the meeting as possible, so that the majority of people can hear it who are interested. But we do have to do the public hearings first. That's it.
Any questions or comments on that item? Anyone from the public? Questions, comments? Move on to the next item, which is a discussion item, review of outdoor illumination rules and regulations.
I'll let Sarah take this. She's on.
Sure.
Status. Sure. So a pretty brief update here. The working group incorporated the feedback from the last discussion with the planning board and sent those revisions over to the Board of Selectmen for their review. And they will be taking it up at their September 8 meeting for discussion. Specifically regarding the implementation.
Enforcement?
Enforcement portion.
That part of it?
Yep.
So we'll be on, then in the September meeting, we'll have feedback on, from that?
We should, yeah.
Okay.
Is that posted somewhere with our revised language?
Um, I, let me make sure.
Flash it too.
That's the latest, latest is up on, it's up on the website, you know, for like today's meeting, but I'll also just make sure that it's on, you know, we have a landing page for the lighting bylaw, and so I'll just make sure that it's there as well.
So it's in the meeting package next to the agenda, which is usually posted in the agenda, I believe you put it there? It may be.
Yeah, that's where I found it. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's there.
It's not under news and announcements where we put the public hearings. It's actually with the A and Rs and the regular topics that we put in a packet separate.
Right, right. Sorry for the confusion. But I'll make sure that it's also additionally on, again, the landing page that is specifically for the lighting bylaw, so folks can take a look.
Thank you. Any more, any questions or comments?
Uh, no.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is other business property.
There is, there is a hand raised.
I apologize, I missed that. Lisa, you all set? Please, Dunderdale, we currently have four attendees in the attendee room.
Hi, it's Lisa Dunderdale, 122 Deerfoot Road. Can you hear me? Okay, great. I didn't, I haven't seen the new proposed enforcement and what the process is for filing a complaint. I briefly looked at it while you had it up on the screen. If I was to form, if I was to file a complaint, what do I have to prove? Or is it the person who has the light that needs to prove that he, that the light is in compliance or otherwise?
Thanks, Lisa. So our recommendation is that the person who files the complaint is obligated to kind of prove the light trespass. And so at this point, it's, it's very similar language what we had initially discussed around, you know, photos should do, should be fine, and, and some of the kind of content that, that would be able to be supportive documentation. This is only a recommendation, since we would not be necessarily in the enforcement, the enforcement, the building commissioner is the enforcement, and they report into the Board of Selectmen. So this is the first draft of our recommended language change. So they'll be discussing this on September 8 at their Board of Selectmen meeting, and so that would be a place to also raise us or ask questions. And we, you know, Sarah said you can access this on our town site, and I can also send you the link. But that's where it's at right now. So this is not a definitive plan, it's a recommendation.
Okay. What are you recommending for support? Pictures? And did I see something about a light meter reading?
Yeah, hold on one second, I'll pull it up.
So you can download new apps on your phone, actually, that take reading, a measure of the light in any given fixture.
So if it's on and I'm obviously, I'm not going to walk onto the property.
Right.
What's it gonna, what's that reading gonna tell me? That how many Kelvin it is, how many lumens that light fixture is? What if it has three lights?
Those mobile apps basically assess whether there's light trespass. So essentially, if it's an unshielded, so they're kind of from our bylaws, like if it's an unshielded light, like if it's, or if it's a floodlight that's not shielded, facing down or shielded, and you have a photo that it's basically not shielded or facing down or meeting the bylaw requirements, that is an example of what we are recommending should, should suffice, and/or an app that you could download, and that would, just a reading from your own property line would be able to assess light trespass in a very simplistic way to be able to demonstrate. So, so again, this is our recommendation, and this is, this is where the Board of Selectmen is going to need to review and discuss it with their employee, the, the building commissioner.
So we can't say this is going to be the one that's done, if you know what I mean. This is just our recommendation. I think it's very difficult. I'm surprised that you're not having the owner of the light provide provide support that the light is in, in line with, with the bylaw. My other question is, what if it's on the third floor of a house is in a residential area? I mean, is that, is that allowed? I thought they were only supposed to be 15 feet above grade. Or is that changed within the bylaw?
No, so that didn't change. I think you, we just have to look at the, you'd have to look at the, again, this is like the, it's a bit of the, we're recommending this is how the billing commissioner can enforce the bylaw. As you know, the building commissioner had previously stated it was not their role. So with, as soon as the language comes back from the state that approves our language, it will be law, and then they'll have to figure out how to enforce it. So that's the point where we haven't necessarily heard back from the state, this is, that this is law. And then we're recommending in the process. So those kind of things have to meld before anything actually can be taken forward. But I think from, and so at this point, I think we have to wait until it's law for actually the building commissioner to actually acknowledge that this is their obligation to enforce.
That's great, thank you. I just assumed that it was approved at this point, and you were just working on the next piece, which was implementation and enforcement. But good to see the information. I appreciate all your work on this, and I'm going to say good night. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
If there's no more questions, we'll move on to the planner's report.
I don't see any additional hands raised. And those four attendees. Okay, I have a few things here, so I'm going to try and go pretty fast. Board of Selectmen are meeting tomorrow evening, and one of their topics under Board of Selectmen are meeting tomorrow evening and one of their topics under other matters where the board may vote is a review of the proposed tree policy that a group of us worked on for public street tree guidelines, public shade tree guidelines. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, that the Board of Selectmen will be discussing that topic tomorrow towards the end of their meetings. We received a letter from the State of Mass, the Commonwealth of Mass Historical Sub-Commission regarding National Register Nomination South Grove Center Historic District. This is what Michael Weishen was referring to when he was speaking earlier about the downtown district. If anybody wants to see that, I can provide it to them in an email. We can post it on the website somewhere. But just wanted to let you know that it was the that information about the national historic nomination. I wanted to just point out that Paul Berry, who was the town clerk in South Grove for 46 years, sadly has passed away at the beginning of August. And I know that the planning board always likes to recognize that. So I had that in my list of information. So we're, our condolences to his family. Every year, we have a rollover amount. It's a year-end article deposition, disposition, sorry, not a deposition, disposition that there is a balance of $7,329 from when the ZAC was being performed. And currently, we roll that over to the next fiscal year. So there's a standard form that I sign so that when the time comes to use that for an equal type of project, we can utilize that funding. So it's my intent to let accounting know that we'd like to roll that amount of money, continue to roll that into the next fiscal year for the potential use of something related to revising the town zoning by and subdivision rules and regs. Something along that line, just an update. That happens every year. News release, the South Grove Rotary Club food trucks are back and sponsors are needed. They're going to have the food trucks on, I believe, September 15th, 22nd, 29th, and October 6th. Wednesday evenings, which is 3:30 to 6:30 PM. If you want more information on that, you can probably look on the website and find that. We need to decide, the next meeting will also be a remote meeting, I'm assuming, since we've been deciding meeting by meeting?
It would seem that, it would seem that being remote on Zoom is even more necessary now than it was back in June and July. So that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Everyone's on for that to, so it'll be on Zoom, Karina.
Okay, until further notice. So we should assume that there'll continue to be Zoom meetings until the planning board says it'll be in person.
Right.
We like to discuss it every meeting. Because there'll be more frequent meetings coming up.
I think, I guess as long as the, this Delta variant is causing an increase in COVID cases, that there's no reason to go back to in person.
Okay. So we'll keep it that way.
The state, state may, as they did in the past, restrict what we can do anyways. But meeting by meeting and just assuming it's going to be on Zoom.
Okay. And everybody knows we have new town council on Wednesdays. Every once in a while on a Wednesday, attorney Jay Talaman has office hours at the town hall from 10 to noon for questions. So I'll pass that information to the planning board so they know when that comes up, if there's anything you ever want me to speak to him directly about procedurally. And I think that's it for the planner's report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approve, approval of minutes, July 19, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
What about you, Kate?
They're always good.
Our next meeting is September 13, 2021. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mimi?
I just have a quick question on the trees. When we discussed this many, many moons ago, was was there a time that all tree hearings used to come before the planning board? As a joint hearing with the tree warden?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I thought I remembered. Thank you.
My wife and I attended the Wake Funeral Mass and the burial of Paul Berry and also the wonderful get together they had at the Fable AA after all of that. And it was so well done. It was so appropriate to honor Paul. I'm glad you brought that up, Karina. Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded at the hour of 9:51, Kate.
I just want to
Any discussion?
I just want to say I had to turn off my video a bunch because it was interfering with my internet connection, but I was still here. So don't take offense.
All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Thank you all.